Okay, 6:30. I called March 7th. Any board meeting to order? Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. First on the agenda is the minutes. Mr. Secretary.
I recommend approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 10th, February 17th, February 24th, and the minutes of the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on March 17th.
10th.
March 10th.
10th.
March 10th, I beg your pardon. That's today.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're all caught up.
Yep. Okay, we have no approval of not required plans tonight. So we're on to our discussions. The applicant, Cumberland Farms, Inc., for a modification of site plan review to allow a revised site layout, including narrowing of the southernly driveway, angled parking, and one-way traffic behind the convenience store at 212 T-Ticket Highway to 1010 Big Riverway. T-Ticket. We'll still engine the address. And you prefer. G4? Okay.
This is existing condition.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm attorney with Amen Law Firm here in Falmouth, and we represent Cumberland Farms, the applicant in this matter. As you know, this project was recently before you for a site plan review. One of the features of the plan at that time had been two-way traffic behind the building to allow access for deliveries. After this hearing, at the zoning board of appeals hearing, the board conditioned their approval on one-way traffic to the rear of the building. In speaking with Mr. Curry, he had concerns about the use of the area as a one-way and wanted us to take certain steps to improve the safety of the area. So the plan's been slightly modified to address these concerns. The exit from the one-way, right here, has been reduced from 25 feet to 19 feet and will be labeled with "Do Not Enter" signs. The parking in the rear has been angled to minimize the possibility of someone coming out and leaving the wrong way. There will be one-way signs on the entrance, and there has been a slight change to the rear as the parking was angled. That paving has been increased ever so slightly there. Otherwise, there's really no other substantial changes to the plan at all. Given the rather minor modifications to the plan, given the delays that the applicants already incurred, we were hopeful that you'd make a vote on this this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions on this plan that we have in front of us, the modified plan?
Both curb cuts, two-way?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, no direction.
Anybody else? Yes, Rob?
Right, I'd like to ask our staff. I see that the Coastal Ponds is listed as still an open item. Could you tell us why, what that issue is?
It's not an open item. It's just letting you know that it is within the Coastal Pond, Dover Lake District. It just falls within the district. But there are no issues about it.
Any other comments from the board or questions?
I guess not.
This appears to be satisfaction with what we're seeing in front of us. Is that correct?
Yeah. To my recollection, we liked what was presented.
Yeah, we've seen this a lot.
Oh, I know. I know.
Quite a bit. Well, this is the first time with the one-way, but it's not a bad idea.
I like it's an improvement.
Yeah.
And with that being two-way here and two-way there, but one-way around, that's...
And this looks safer.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Now, that being the case... Yes, Paul?
This was published. Do you want to read the publication date on this issue?
Oh, yes, you should. Sorry about that.
Okay. Meeting notice was issued on March 6, 2015. Seven notices were identified by regular mail at that time.
Is there any comments or questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none there, none from the board. Yes, Rob?
Well, I just want to verify something else. This says modification of site plan review. So is this a modification of a previously approved site plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we approved it, and it went to the zoning board of appeals. They've made the modifications that we're seeing in front of us tonight. So it's coming back for us to approve.
Okay.
What we had asked for with our site plan review. And if everybody is satisfied, I would need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the project as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next project for this session, the applicant is McDougal's Cape Club Marine Service, Inc., will present a site plan review to install four three-tier racks for increased year-round boat capacity at property located at 145 Falmouth Heights Road, Falmouth. The engineering firm is Holmes &amp; McGrath.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul?
On March 6, 2015, 43 of butters were notified by regular mail on this issue.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Law Firm, Falmouth, and we represent McDougal's Cape Marine Service, Incorporated. I'm here tonight with Tom Delato, the special project manager for McDougal's, and Raul Lazardi Rivera of Holmes &amp; McGrath. McDougal's is the owner and operator of the property at 145 Falmouth Heights Road, and they've been at that property since 1911, shortly after Falmouth Harbor came into existence. This property has undergone very dramatic redevelopment over the past decade. These renovations have been pursuant to special permit decisions issued by the zoning board of appeals and site plan review of this board. The property as it exists today is a vast improvement, both aesthetically and functionally, over how the property existed as recently as 2004. At that time, there were 15 buildings, and the lot coverage stood at 97 percent. Today, the lot coverage has been reduced to... The plan actually says 82.7, but recent recalculations by Holmes &amp; McGrath has shown that we are actually closer to 74 percent by lot coverage. And the buildings are much more functional and useful for the applicant, and it has allowed McDougal's to become one of the premier marinas in New England. They handle not only boat storage, but also extended boat repairs. They are seeking to install four three-tier boat racks on the property, similar to what Pier 37 across the harbor on Scranton Avenue has. These will be located in the southern portion of the premises, and they are colored here, 1, 2, 3, and 4. This will allow McDougal's to increase their capacity, to improve their efficiency, to supplement their services and repair operations, to increase employment opportunities, and to increase their capacity for boats, something that is sorely needed in the area. This will not add more than 1,000 square feet of gross floor area and will not result in the requirement of additional parking. The site, as it stands today, has 150 parking spaces and 86 berths. The requirement in a marine district is one parking space per berth, so even with the addition of up to 60 berths, which is the most they could add with the four tiers, that brings us to 146 required parking spaces, which is still below the existing parking. We are before this board tonight because the 2007 site plan states that any changes to that plan would come before the board. Any change should be reviewed and modified if necessary. The planning board, as a modification of this decision, shall review any future use of the site, is what it states specifically. The applicant is taking measures to improve traffic flow and ensure the safety of guests and visitors on the property. They intend to inhibit vehicular and pedestrian access to this area here by placing cones, signs, and sawhorses as needed in this location and in this location. They will also no longer be using this entrance on the southern end of the property off of Grand Avenue. This area will be labeled as boat-moving area and labeled for employees only.
Sorry, how do you get in there?
They'll still be using the main entrance. And that's the entrance primarily used today by, I would say, the majority of visitors to the site. These tiers will be entirely on already paved portions of the property. There's going to be no increase in lot coverage. The use is in harmony with the site. It is in harmony with the purpose of the marine district, in which boat storage is a byright use. There is ample space and parking. This will create no new non-conformities. It will comply with all set backs, and the property is well-suited for the project. I, along with Tom and Raul, would be happy to address any questions the board may have at this time.
First, I'd like to ask Marlene, before we start discussing the question, this is the board, to go over the site plan staff report. There were some issues there, I believe.
I just want to share with you the referral from the fire department. Again, I'm just noting on the staff report that the lot is waterfront and that the access and circulation are brought up in the letter from the fire department. And that's pretty much it. The conservation commission and the engineering department have both sent back referrals with no comments.
Okay. This is from the FFRD. Regarding McDougal's, we conducted a site visit to try and visualize how the proposed location of these rack storage structures would impact existing access for our apparatus and for sprinkler connections, FDCs. Due to the snow buildup and current boat storage congestion on the property, we could not make a proper evaluation in order to provide your office with any comments for this proposal. We will require further information from the property owners and would suggest that a representative call and make an appointment with our department so we can review their plans and then make any comments and suggestions to the planning board by today's hearing. But we haven't had that, correct?
That's the only piece I have from the fire department.
Okay, so they have some issues at this point that would have to be... Or they may, or they may not have issues at this point, but we haven't heard definitively from them. So, okay, now let's go to any discussion or comments.
Ms. Kerfoot, before discussion, if I could just address that very quickly. I have called and left a message for Captain Smith, and this area here will still be 60 feet wide. This entrance will still be remaining, and there will still be access through here. That being said, I understand you certainly need their report, but I don't envision... I'm not on the FFRD, certainly. But I don't envision any big disturbance because the pathways are remaining open.
Okay, so for purposes of discussion, then we should most likely say, we will assume until notified differently, that it's okay, but we cannot make any definitive...
Understood.
...decision on this until we hear from the fire department. You want to pass this back down to Marlene? So, comments or questions from the planning board?
Maybe one of the concerns might be for the fire department is where they're going to put the racks on either sides of the buildings down here might be the connections, the building connections. So, there's probably buildup of snow, and they couldn't see where they're at.
Sure. Luckily, we've had a lot of melting in the past week or so.
So that may be one of the issues that needs to be addressed, how they can connect to the buildings.
Okay. And I assume that can be rectified.
And hopefully, they won't be blocking. I mean, that might be a concern, make sure nothing's blocking it.
So, Bob?
Do the racks connect to the building, or are they freestanding?
No, they're freestanding. They will be anchored in the ground.
Right.
If I understand, this existing access will remain open?
Yes. It will not be changed or anything. Exactly.
The other question is, and there's lot coverage notes. It shows opposed coverage for structures, parking, and paving, 82.7 percent. allowable 70 percent. Would you explain that, please?
Sure. Well, as I mentioned, the existing coverage of the property was 97 percent, and it was reduced by special permit. So the lot coverage is allowed under special permit because it was a reduction of an existing nonconformity.
But you had also said, I believe, that that...
It's going to be even lower than what is stated, based on Holmes &amp; McGrath's calculations. But that just came to light today.
Okay, and it was 70-something, you said?
74 approximately.
74, okay.
Well, perhaps there should be a footnote there indicating that is reduction from the allowable from before, and that would clarify that a little bit, because right now it jumps out and says allowable is less than what you have, so I think you need to correct that.
Yeah, we're still operating under the... Well, we're applying to the zoning board for modification of the special permit as well, so it's the existing special permit which reduced it from 97.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments from the planning board?
My only question was the fire department. I just...
And we'll wait on that.
That's mine, too.
Okay. Rob?
Right. Under site plan review, whatever happens, it cannot result in a detriment to the neighborhood. Now, if I lived across the street from Grand Avenue, I'm assuming there is... I believe there are residences there, although we haven't made a site visit yet, and I assume we will. I would not be so happy to be looking at a stack of boats out my front window instead of, say, just the side of a building. And I'm wondering why, if you had considered putting those racks between those two buildings where that one rack is indicated?
So, I can address part of that question, which is, across the street on Grand Avenue is an industrial site, and then next to it, a little further down, closer to, a little past the Grand Avenue entrance to this site, is the Sifu Chanti. So there are no residences directly across Grand Avenue. There are some further up the Heights Hill, of course, but directly across Grand Avenue is not a residence.
Okay. I haven't... We haven't done a site visit yet, so I just was making a comment about that.
As to the location, I think the applicant felt this was the best location for access to the boats, access to the loading area, because the area between the buildings is used to access those buildings. That's where the berths are, to bring boats in and out.
The doors into those buildings are in that alley?
They're in this alleyway, exactly.
Okay. And the other building?
The other building?
Yeah.
Um... Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think you said it. Would you repeat it one more time? How many slips are there, and how many parking spaces are there?
There are 86 berths existing, and there are currently 150 parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob is?
I just would like to clarify that a little more. I'm Bob Amen, for your record, also representing McDougal's. There are actually more than 150 existing parking spaces. The plan shows 150 parking spaces with the boat storage... Sorry, the boat racks in place. They're being located where there is existing parking, here, which is primarily used by employees. So there will be 150 spaces after the loss of those spaces and the replacement in the same location of the racks. In the calculation of 60 new berths, if you will, even though the zoning bylaw refers to berths for determining the capacity of a boatyard and the number of required parking spaces, inasmuch as we're adding not just boat storage, seasonal, but capacity for taking boats in and out of the water during the season, it seemed that you would add... Treat each of those potential boats as a berth. So we have berths in the water, which isn't changing, and we're essentially adding spaces. Now, the 60 potential boats is actually an overstatement, in part because there's one space next to building here where there's a shed, and there won't be any boats stored on the first level of that. So there's... That's three boats that actually aren't going to be there. But the 60 also includes the boats that would be stored in the summer boating season along the bulkhead, and that's this area. That doesn't show a rack. There will be a two-level rack there, and we want to make sure that you understand that. But that's not a structure. That will be a portable rack that won't be there in the winter. It'll be moved elsewhere on the site for storage, because in the winter, right next to the bulkhead, they put very large boats. And the building commissioner has determined that the two-rack system, which does not require a fixed location on the ground, is not actually fixed into the ground, unlike the three-tier units. That isn't a structure. It wouldn't require a special permit. That's just like storage that happens now, where you put a boat on stanchions. That's not a structure, and he felt that a two-story structure, a two-level boat storage truck, isn't a structure from a zoning point of view. So it isn't shown as such on the plan. If we were proposing two-level racks throughout the site, there would be no new structures. We wouldn't be here. It's because the three-level units have to be affixed to the ground for stability and safety. That meets the definition of structure. Okay. So we are actually... We will be adding 57... It's not 60, it's 57, actually, berths, if you will, because of the storage racks, all of which are not actually structures. But even counting that, you'd need 86 plus 57, or 143 parking spaces. There will still be 150 parking spaces, and actually, that's proved to be much more than is required. They find that they only need about a quarter of the parking spaces that are there, and that even on the busiest weekends of the summer, they are only at around 57 percent usage of the parking area.
Other questions? Is there anybody from the public? Yes, ma'am. Please come up and state your name.
Good evening. I'm Linda Clark. I live at a budding property at the Boatyard Condominiums, 129 Falmouth Heights Road. I have a lot of concerns. We are a condominium complex of 32 units. I'm the president of the association. As far as the parking's concerned, there are two other businesses on site. Seeto's on site, Boston Yachts is on site, and they have several employees. So if the numbers are what they're talking about, I'm not sure if there's adequate parking. There's a parking lot across the street that accommodates parking for the Island Queen, which is up to 100 cars. That's directly across the street. They were given a special permit some years ago. So the traffic in this area is very, very high. That's a concern. I actually live on the other side. I don't... But McDougal's, my condo's around the other side, and I am across from Pier 37, and I listen to the forklift all day, from 7:00 a.m. till probably 8:00 o'clock at night. Beep, 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 and that's the noise that this forklift is going to create because the equipment, it's mandatory, they have that backup safety device. So that's what the neighbors on the other side of my complex are going to listen to, because I listen to it at Pier 37. As far as traffic in the harbor, I guess it is what it is. There's a tremendous amount of traffic in the harbor. I don't... Obviously, you don't govern the waterways. Another 60 boats in the harbor, Falmouth Harbor, it's a little much right now, especially with the big ferries coming in and out of the harbor on frequent basis, in and out all day long. I don't know... I guess the forklift is going to be powered by diesel. I'm not sure. And that's another concern, besides the beeping we're going to encounter this forklift. And it is an all-day event. I witnessed it at the Pier 37. It's an all-day event. I can be out on my deck, I'm talking on the phone, and the other person's going, "What is that noise?" It's the beeping of a forklift across the harbor. So that is a concern to us as director butters. I mean, we listen to... It's a boatyard. We listen to certain noise over the air, and it is what it is at the moment, but we feel like we don't want to incur any other noise. There's enough noise on that property. As far as the metal buildings are concerned, that forklift is going to be crossing over the path of the two metal buildings, and those buildings echo. You're going to hear that noise in about, probably, eight, 10, maybe 12 of the units, I think that's all of my concerns. I think it's enough. Like I say, we're a very quiet complex, and we pay a fair amount of taxes in this town, and we feel like we shouldn't have to incur the noise or the... the noise or the traffic. Falmouth Heights Road has become very, very, very busy. I sit at the edge of my complex in the summertime, and between the foot traffic and the car traffic, I'm sitting there trying to get out of my driveway. So, this is going to be an impact on Falmouth Heights Road and our community. So, I would hope that there's some thought put into that before any decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else who wishes to comment from the public? Okay. I do have two letters here in support that Arlene passed down to me. It was noted by Ms. Clark that these are businesses there. Both of them are adding support. One is Towboat and Tuck and Sound Inc., the other one is Seeto, and they're indicating that there's need for more birthing for the boats, that it will bring additional business advantages to Falmouth to have the capacity to birth additional boats, bringing it to the town. Essentially, both of them are very similar in that, that's what both say. So, I wanted to let you know that. Further discussion with the board here. Doug?
I think that's an interesting point that I hadn't considered, was the amount of traffic in the harbor.
Yeah.
Good point.
I'm in and out of there all the time, compared to other harbors. It's not bad.
Mr. Clower, I have a question, please. Boat racks two and four, for example, what's the height of those? How many, are they above the roof of the building?
No. They will be, the top tier will be at thirty feet. The buildings are at thirty-seven and forty.
So, that's three racks. Is that the same on number two as well?
One, two, three, and four, all three racks, yes.
All thirty. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. As you know, for site plan review...
Mr. Curf, I think Bob wanted to respond to some of Ms. Clark's comments.
I wanted to just provide a little bit of information in response to some of the concerns that Linda Clark has noted on behalf of the Boatyard Condominium. First of all, all four racks that are proposed, instructions are all over here on the southeast side of the property, southwest, actually. And, the boats that are stored there would all be put in, in this location. The Boatyard Condominium is over here. There won't be any more forklift traffic in this part of the property as a result of these racks. And, both the appearance of these racks and sound will be shielded by these very substantial buildings. So, while there are units of the Boatyard Condominium, of course, that are very close in proximity to the parking field, this new activity should have minimal impact. Now, traffic has been raised as an issue. Anticipating this development last summer, we asked McDougal's to actually keep track of the usage of the parking. That is, what is, how often do people actually to the site to get their boats, and what is the real need for parking? And, we've already said we're meeting, we're exceeding the town's standard. But, I'll give you now what this document that they've called 2014 Parking Lot Efficiency, and you can see that the actual number of parking spaces being used is substantially less than what's there, and there's plenty of room for more capacity. It's estimated that only one in four boats stored in these racks will actually be used on even the busiest day of the season. That's a measure of the activity, and it's consistent with their records. So, let me give you this, it's an important part of your consideration. I do want to note that the town did rezone property across the street so that there could be parking, increasing the traffic. There is boat storage there, and what I want to note is that that boat storage is not McDougal's boat storage. McDougal's isn't renting the property across the street that's being used for parking and for boat storage. It was after the Boatyard Condominium was constructed that the town created the marine zone. It was to protect the harbor from more residential development. And, this marina is really the epitome. It's the ideal of what one would expect or want for a town's marina district. The issue of use, I don't think is really the site plan review, and that's true even with the design criteria that's been added to the bylaws. It's the Board of Appeals that makes those decisions. The Board of Appeals will get a referral from the harbor master. We've talked to the harbor master. He'll have to say it himself, but we think, based on those conversations, he's fully supportive of this, and he has said he would write a letter when he was asked for a referral by the Board of Appeals. I'm not a boater. I'm not an expert on the harbor, but what we've heard is that there is plenty of capacity and great need, great demand by boaters for being able to store their boat and access it in Falmouth, and we don't have a lot of marine districts, and particularly in Falmouth Inner Harbor. This use of this property is exactly what marinas are for. And, I appreciate that the planning board role is to protect neighbors from the development of nearby properties. It's most certainly also of a role of the planning board to protect the businesses that operate lawfully and with, you know, great credit and provide employment opportunities in the appropriate zoning districts, and in particular, the marine district, because that's why it was created, to protect the very use, which we're trying to do. And, boat storage is a by-right use in the marine district. We already store boats, McDougal's already stores boats on the ground, boats big and small. They can put up racks that are two levels high by right. Those are not structures. The building commissioner's made that determination. The location of the three-tier racks that are proposed is the ideal location on the lot with the least impact on neighbors, and as Mr. Clower stated, the properties across Grand Avenue are not residential properties. Thank you.
Before you go away, just a quick question. I was curious, has there been any assessment of the damage to these docks for the severe winter we've had?
Tom Delato is the project manager and familiar with the operations, and that's a question for him. I have no idea. And, Tom, you need to come up here to answer that question.
Good evening. As of right now, to answer your question, as of right now, we haven't fully determined. We did have a little bit of damage. Fortunately, we have some pretty significant ice control equipment that we deployed, and we're able to mitigate. We have a little bit of, we have a little bit of damage to the fixed pier. It's known as the fuel dock, and we're having someone come in and do a little repair work for us, but it is, for the most part, it's, we survived pretty well. We incurred a lot of expense for snow control, but the Lord's helping us out, getting rid of the snow now so we can actually get back to working on boats. But, one of the most significant things that we've had happen is a lot of fence damage from all of the volume of snow and the moving of the snow, and so that's something we're addressing. But, the docks appear to have survived quite well.
Thank you.
When is this going, before the CVA? I'm sorry?
April 2nd.
April 2nd? Okay. Coming up soon. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Ralph brought up the idea of a site visit. As per our policy, if people are interested in that, I would need a motion to that effect. Any motion?
I move that we have a site visit to McDougal's Marine Service.
Is there a second? Moved in second in discussion?
I don't understand why we need a site visit for this. I mean, it's a modification, and you're talking about racks that are just right there.
I'm intimately familiar with the site.
I'm on the site.
I'm okay without a site visit. Yeah. I'm okay without a site visit, as we're right there. Anybody can look in. Anybody else have a comment on this? Okay. All in favor of a site visit?
I'll say two.
Okay, it's two. All opposed? Fine. So, there won't be a site visit. I assume if people want to go out individually and look at it, it's a commercial property, and you can see what you need to see from the road, too. Thank you.
You can also go to Pier Thirty-Seven.
Yeah, look across. We'll be waiting on this until we get the referral from the fire department before we take a vote on it.
Mrs. Curf, can I just point out that this is, there's a lot of equipment that moves around on the property, and even now, I'm told people are just saying, "Get my boat into the water, please." Visits are most welcomed by members of the planning board, but we would ask that you notify the office so that somebody can be there and just show you where the activity's going to be, and that person would be Tom Delato.
Okay. I was not suggesting that people just go wandering through. There's, right here from the road, you can just see it, I think.
Well, you got a better idea, actually, if you do go onto the site, but it should be accompanied.
Okay. So, contact Mr. Delato in case anybody wishes to go out there and see it on their own. Moving on, applicant Savon Haidem LLC, site plan review to construct a five-thousand-square-foot steel building for fuel truck parking and offices at Lot Three, Thomas B. Landers Road, East Falmouth, and it's...
Mrs. Curf, are you continuing the last matter to the next meeting of the planning board? Is that your...
It would have to be, yes, because we're waiting for the fire department.
We just want to make sure we had a date for the continuance, and that's it. Thank you.
Oh, okay. The next meeting is...
It's not a hearing, so it'll be...
Well, I'm not continuing it, but we bring it up, yeah, because we don't close this.
Right.
So, in what you were looking for, Bob, is, yeah, it's going to be brought up again at our next meeting, not an official continuance.
Do you have a notice for this one, too, Bob?
Yeah.
Please state your name for the...
Good evening. Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. There are notices on this.
On March 6th, the public meeting notice was sent to six of Butters by regular mail.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Now, we can...
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. I'm a personal friend of the applicant and also a customer, and I'm going to recuse myself.
Now, we can try to go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with offices located at 112 State Road in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and I'm here representing Savon Haidem LLC on this application. With me is Mr. Johnny Haidem, who's the owner and applicant of this application. The, I have an aerial map. I would like to go through a brief presentation with the proposal, then we can open the floor for questions. The site is located at Lot Three, Thomas B. Landers Road, and it's in the light industrial A district. It's, the site measures approximately 1.8 acres. To the north of the site is all agricultural land. To the south is Thomas B. Landers, and to the east and west is all industrial businesses' developed plots. So, as you see, this proposal is in harmony with the district. Currently, the approximately seventy-five percent of the land is stripped from vegetation, the center of the land. I do have a site, an existing site condition showing the property line and the surrounding. This is, this dash line is the existing tree line right now, so you can see most of the site in the center was stripped from all the vegetation. It's mostly covered with gravel and sand surfaces. With this proposal, Savon Haidem LLC would like to construct a five-thousand-square-foot steel building right in the center of the site with access off of Thomas Landers Road, associated parking and paved surfaces, lighting, drainage improvements, and landscape. The, mainly the building, which is five-thousand square feet, would be used to park or garage two large trucks, fuel trucks. A portion of the building would be used for offices associated to support the transportation business. The, if I can go quickly over the drainage, we had submitted a drainage report to the town engineer to review. I'm not sure. I didn't get any comments. As far as the circulation, you can see that the large trucks can make it all around the building. I think that would be something for the fire department to look at. I'm not sure if you have any comments from the fire department on Mr. Guy. In regards to the drainage, we're proposing a closed drainage system to collect all the runoff from the site and the building, the roof runoff, to the catch bases with deep sumps and oil-water separators going to a drainage main hall, also with an oil-water separator. Before, it's going to a storm septic unit that would treat the collected runoff and remove any suspended solids or oil before it's discharged to an infiltration system on site that's designed to accommodate the twenty-five-year-storm, 2.5-inch-per-hour intensity as required by zoning bylaws. Required parking for this facility is 1.3 parking, one space per 1.3 employees. So, we calculated we have potentially maybe ten employees with the space that we have, based on square footage, the maximum number of employees. Based on that, you would need eight parking spaces. We are providing twelve parking spaces on site. The lighting, I have a lighting plan also. All the lighting would be controlled and will not spill on the site. It's all cast down. I do have, I don't think you've got this, but this is the projection of the footprint, which shows all zero intensity around the property, and so there'll be no spillage of lighting to the street or to the adjacent properties. We also have some landscaping, too, on the landscape plan that shows the trees and most of the, most of the site, the natural state of the site will remain intact. So, most of the, most of our site work is within the areas that have already been disturbed, basically. It's all within this envelope. This is the edge of the paved parking. Also, I do have some elevation to show the building and a floor layout, still. I'm not sure. If you're interested, we can go through the floor layout. And, I do have a rendering of what the site would look like. We would, that might not visualize... We would, that might not visualize what's on the site, so. And the, the offices would be the last-
Through the building?
The east, the southerly side of the building in the back will be stripped 25 feet by the width of the, of the building, two-story, the mezzanine for offices, for secretaries and accountants or whatever, you know, so. I do have a floor layout also with the plans that would show the, the floor layout.
Where's the tanks? What tanks? Don't have tanks? No starch? No trucks? Just trucks?
Does the board have any questions? Jim?
Question on the lighting. Is it all down lighting only, not shooting any light up into the-
Correct, all down lighting.
They're capped and the lights all down?
All down. It's, and I, I can circulate this, actually, because-
I was worried about uplighting, not on the ground. I just don't want to light the sky up like an airport.
And also, if I can add with the site plan, the closest light pole to Thomas Landers is about 80 feet. So it's not something that you don't have poles right within the right of way or anything else, so.
How do the trucks exit, access to building?
Okay. That will pull in this way, they can turn into the building, and then they back into this little area here, and they can go around the building.
Okay.
I believe I will have the template on the landscape plan showing the trucks going and pulling up, so.
Will vehicles be washed at this location? Is there provisions for wash pad or, or anything like that?
Where? On the, on site?
On site?
No. There'll be no, no washing of cars or anything.
This is a fuel tank, a terminal. Does that mean there's fuel storage on site as well, or just-
No, no, just, just those are the, the transportation tanks, but by laws, you can't park anywhere unless it's zoned industrial or it's allowed. This is allowed by special permit. It's not, it's by rights, but this is special permit from the zoning board. We'll be going to the zoning board on April 23rd. We're on the agenda, but we need to refer, we need a site plan, refer from, from the planning board as.
Are there other questions from the board? I have one that I'm curious how many trucks there may be here at any one. Is that going to tremendously vary?
I think this is a question for Mr. Headam. I think the five trucks?
Five trucks, okay. Because I was counting your little drawings on here, I thought, I thought I counted up six, so I thought, okay, well.
That's just a shot.
And I know what it's illustrative, but-
Six on what sheet?
The drawing of the-
That's just a proposed travel route, isn't it?
Yeah, I know, I understand.
This is showing a truck going around, leaving the site.
I understand that, I just wondered if it might indicate something else, too. Okay. Is there any other comment? Yes, Doug?
Last question. Do you propose to do mechanic repairs on the trucks here?
There'll be some minor repair inside the truck, regular maintenance repairs, I believe, like oil changes or in that nature, just to keep, but maybe not. On these trucks, I think major repairs will have to go to specific sites where regulated by the state or whatever, so. But there'll be some, some minor repair inside.
So do you need any provisions for catching any fluids inside, or is any-
Yeah, we do on, if you look at the septic plan, I think this, we have an oil, we have a French drain going to an MDC trap before we send it, and this will be probably, I'm sure this will be reviewed by engineering or plumbing or whoever when we go through the building permit process, yes. So we do have a provision for an oil-water separator or an MDC trap.
Okay, and that's framed in the building as well? Okay.
That's shown on, I believe, the-
Page six?
10, sheet 10?
Yes.
I didn't see anything in there, though.
That's the French drain, I mean, no, I think it's, it's proposed, it's on the septic. Yes, yes, that's the French drain going to an MDC trap.
I see.
And then it goes to-
Okay, thank you.
Page 7.
So all of the drainage, this is all going to be paved here except for that vegetated area. And any drainage pits along here will be filtered?
Right. Yeah, this is, this is only showing the septic plan. The drainage plan on the septic sheet, I think, I don't know. It's integrating, that's one elevation, that's, this is the lowest spot on the site, so everything goes to the double drain catch bases, it goes to drainage main hall, this is a deep some catch basin with an oil-water separator, goes into drainage main wall with an oil-water separator before it goes to a storm septic, 450 storm septic that also will go through some separation of oil before it's going into, and also, I forgot to mention, there's an emergency shut-off valve here to, in case there's any spill or something that, and all employees would be trained to, to be able to access that valve and shut off in case of emergencies. We did submit a maintenance, fuel and spill prevention plans with, with the drainage report, and I think it's being reviewed by the town engineer, or I don't know, if you have any comments from the town engineer or from-
Not yet, we don't. Oh, we do? Yep. And we have engineering's referral, everything is fine. Okay. From your description, it looked like it was extremely well planned.
Thank you.
Looks like engineering agrees with that. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Jim?
I know you answered my question on the, on the parking. Is, what I seem to see is lights in the building too. Are they also down lights?
They're down lights. They're just, no, they're just shining on the sign, the gooseneck, so they look architecturally attractive, you know.
But everything's down, not up?
No, there's no-
The last question is, can you explain to me what the concern was about the migration corridor, and if there's any area designated for that?
I believe, because part, portion of the site is under the, the endangered habitat for, so we did file with MISA on this. I do have a copy of the application that went up to MISA, and this is regulated by the state because portion of the site is within their jurisdiction, so you have to file with that.
I see, so that's-
I don't, I don't see anything, I mean, most of the site is already disturbed or stripped of, you know, and all the proposed work is within that area. But we do have to file with them, so that would be a condition from the zoning board or whoever, or prior to issuing a building permit, you have to file and satisfy MISA on that.
That's it for me.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who wishes to comment? And discussion, I mean, great, whatever you prefer. Okay, we could discuss it now. You can.
I think it looks like a well-planned and well-located.
We need to close the hearing, have a discussion.
We don't close, this is site plan review. There's only more deals that we do that part. We're just saying, okay, there's good forest sort of things we can do.
I'm happy to discuss it now.
I think it looks good, and all my questions are answered, so.
It's a good plan?
Yeah, I think it's well done, good presentation, drawings are great, very detailed.
Same, same, I'd like to comment to the speaker. It was a very nice presentation. It's very nice when you get it all, you explained everything, that was, that was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, site plan review accepted as it's presented to us?
I think so, my personally, yes.
I move that we accept the plan as presented?
Second.
I didn't hear the motion.
Pardon?
I didn't hear the motion.
That we accept the plan as presented to us.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I would like to see if anyone can comment on that, too. Very nice.
This is what we want, a local businessman to do this, it's exactly what, it's perfect. We didn't propose any trouble.
I voted for you. He voted twice.
I watch every minute of your deliberation.
Okay. We move on to discussion now, and you'll all remember this plan. The applicant is Old Main LLC, definitive plan slash special permit to create a 10-lot planned residential development at 96 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, Falmouth Engineering. And we're planning to discuss this tonight. I will remind you that we are going to have a site visit, and the snow disappears sufficiently that we can have a site visit, which hopefully is going to be relatively, which we found melting at night, we've been melted.
Tomorrow, isn't it?
What?
Site visit is this week?
It's not going to be, no. No, because there's still too much snow. I haven't found a paraboid ship that'll take me through that muck in the snow. So, let's have the discussion on this, and people have comments, I know. I think you do anyway. Jim?
Mine's all related to the, to after the site, because I don't have anything new.
Okay, Ken?
Well, one that I, I'm aware, looking into the, is the, the grid versus the, the proposed plan. And the proposed plan that we show right now shows 10, 10 spaces, and per the bylaw, if you look at it, they don't require, they don't qualify for the bonus. So without the grid to the proposed plan, could be no more than nine, nine spots, not the 10 that they're looking at. And then there's a question as to, of Lot 6 access, and a lot of it's going to depend on, on what we see when we walk there.
Well, as is delineated, as you pointed out, part of that wetland extends into-
The driveway.
The theoretical driveway for Lot 6, which would mean it couldn't be.
Be a valid lot, correct. That, that, with that, that would mean the plan could only be eight lots.
Excluding the wetlands, we've got almost 10 and a half acres.
Quite a drop.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ken, when you referred to that wetlands intersecting, you said the driveway, is that, is it 50 feet wide? Is that what you're saying is the driveway?
Yeah, it wouldn't be enough, right. The width of this particular driveway wouldn't be wide enough.
Isn't that 50 feet right there? Isn't this distance here 50? And what's-
That is wetlands.
I know, but this is 50 feet.
No, it's not. It wouldn't be after that.
No, I understand, this is into the, you're, you're referring to this as a driveway.
Right.
This is a 50-foot wide driveway.
That's, that's what, all these are, these are all driveways.
I thought they were, I misunderstood, I must be misunderstanding the plan. I thought they were just, you know, ways to get the frontage down to the circle in order for them to qualify, that's what I thought it was.
No, those are their driveways. That's why I asked the question about-
50-foot wide driveways?
Well, regardless of that, that's, that's why I asked-
I'm confused.
The question of, you know, the length, they're really long, but the big one is, is right there, it's not, it's not wide enough.
You have to be able to prove that you can have a subdivision.
With a 50-foot driveway?
This is a-
It's a road.
Subdivision, yeah.
But it's a, they're driveway road.
It's the, it's the clear access to the lot.
Marlene?
It's actually not a driveway width that we're concerned about, it's the, that the minimum lot width of 50 feet be maintained. It's a lot width dimensional standard.
It's the lot, and I was just, the word driveway that I was, I was having, it's the lot width, that's what I was trying to get at. I was just understanding semantics, that's all.
I'm just saying it's in the driveway.
This is the lot frontage on-
I think of a driveway as being 20 feet wide, and I was just confused in the words, that's all.
Lot driveway, man.
I know, 16, 15.
So Ken has questioned whether this could be an actual, Lot 6 can be an actual true lot under this grid subdivision, which is how you determine the number of lots that are possible under the PRD. Okay, Doug?
I think he's right about that, and I guess I also agree about the, the bonus lot, because I think the bonus would be more in line if this was next to other conservation land. Public use land isn't really a conservation area, and also, there's no public access, so I'm not sure how the bonus really comes into play. Thought I could be persuasive.
I think, I think, I think having big, open spaces near each other, it, even though they are private, is still conducive to wildlife, natural, no light, all the benefits, I think there are benefits, whether it's public or private access alone, and having it together gives more mass to it for darker spaces, less uplighting in sky, less dense, you know, it's, it quiets it down.
I certainly agree, we do, it's, it's better.
It's better. I mean, I think that's what the better, I've heard that discussion before, that that's why they mass it, not necessarily because we all get to go out there and use it, but by having it together with more land is a benefit to the community as a whole.
Yeah, but the question was, because it's non, the requirement is it has to be in your open space for them to get a bonus lot. That's, that's what that was, he was talking about, right? Is that, do you understand that? They, there's a requirement in the bylaw that it has to be abutted to-
Continuous to-
Continuous to open space for them to get a bonus lot. Their open space that they create has to be abutted by open space, and it isn't on this program.
I'm not sure public use is, falls in line with the open space.
Yeah, the school is not public, public, the town of Falmouth owning the school, that's not open space, so they don't qualify under the bylaw for open-
I'll have to check that, I'm not sure, that sounds-
Yeah, no, that's, that was verified with, with the staff, and we, so they don't qualify for the bonus lot.
First of all, there are seven things that we can look at to make this eligible, and there's no agricultural or farming activity, that's number one. Number two, is natural integrity of environmentally sensitive or wildlife habitat areas will be enhanced. We know that, we've heard there's the eastern box turtle in here. Scenic vistas will be highlighted and preserved. One could say yes, because that's being kept as an open space, but you may debate that. Oh, I'm sorry, this is on 240 dash 100, 122, purpose.
Just so we're, just so nobody gets confused here, those seven, those seven issues, you have to find four out of seven of those in order to grant a special permit for a cluster subdivision. That doesn't have anything to do with the bonus lot. The bonus lot is a separate determination you need to make on the next page, 126.1. That's at your sole discretion, you have to, and if you look at B1, it has to meet B1A, that's a mandatory requirement, in addition to at least one of the three criteria listed in B, C, or D. So A is not negotiable, and that's the bonus lot. So when you're making your findings, the seven, the four out of seven on, in the first section are for the special permit that actually issues the cluster, and then you would have to make separate findings in order to grant the bonus lot, just so, you know, everybody is on the same page.
Okay. So, what I was reading is not for the bonus lot.
in B, C, or D, so A is not negotiable, and that's the bonus lot, so when you're making your findings, the seven, the four out of seven on, in the first section are for the special permit that actually issues the cluster, and then you would have to make separate findings in order to grant the bonus lot, just so, you know, everybody is on the same page.
Okay. So, what I was reading is not for the bonus lot, that's to grant this plan, the PRD. The bonus lot, as, as Marlene said, B1 and B1A has to be found, and B1A is the proposed open space parcel, abuts existing public open space or protected open space owned by a nonprofit land trust, that doesn't exist here.
That in itself would disqualify them for the bonus lot.
And B1B is a rare threat or endangerment species, that's okay. And C, it links parcels via public access easement or similar instrument, existing or proposed public hiking or walking trails, bikeways, access to points to the shoreline, but we've been told that there will be no public access to this, so there won't be any walking or hiking through this. And we've not been told that there's going to be any donation of the open space to a land trust or public entity, so we had to find three of those, no, sorry.
No, that one is, anyone would dis.
Anyone would disqualify, sorry.
Correct.
In this one, in this one, you have to find A, and you have to find one of the others in order to grant the density bonus.
So because we can't find A, we can't access it out. So other comments?
Yeah, I drove down Old Main, 20 miles an hour the other day, and I do see the concern for the traffic going by, there is, there is quite a, a sightline detriment, I would say, over that little ridge right there, and, you know, there are, it is a busy road because you do have a lot of parents driving kids to school and picking kids up for activities and things like that. The, the light is an issue, I think that's something that really needs to be addressed with this. I also find too that the, the lay of the land that slopes down towards the wetlands area, I'm aware of a lot in Hatchville right now where they had to reduce the number of bedrooms and increase the distance from the wetlands because of slope of the land, so those, those things concern me.
And we won't really have a good visual till we go out there.
Right.
Yeah.
There's, they've done a lot to address that though, fixing the grade at the entrance on the proposed elevation, some filling at the, the bottom of the entrance hill, and some grading at the top, so it'll be better than what it looks like now.
I still want to see it, still want to walk the way.
Ralph?
Right, I was hoping that the applicant could possibly petition the school committee to make the curb cut, which is closest to this development, one way in, so that as you crest that part of the road, you would, you wouldn't have any cars entering Old Main Road, you'd only have them exiting Old Main Road. So, that would definitely, in my, in my opinion, increase the safety factors associated with the traffic in this application.
It might, but I don't think we can put any kind of contingency.
I didn't say we would, I said that the applicant would.
Could work something out. Would be safer for my driving by there and looking.
That's a difficult task.
Yeah, I know, I don't think we'd have any answer like that at time.
Well, now you're making traffic coming the other way, they can't get into the school, I mean, it depends on which way you're going.
Right. So are there other comments on this?
For me, it's the site view, I get a little bit of sight before I make any more comments.
Yeah, it's a big one, I think, but what we're looking at is eight lots instead of 10, for the reasons that we just talked about tonight.
Yeah, that's what I see.
I think at that, it could be a good development.
So you're in agreement with eight instead of 10?
I think I am, yes.
Okay, Jim?
I'm going to withhold making any decisions till I've walked on the site.
Okay.
I really need to see it.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I agree with Jim, I'd like to visit the site.
Okay, Ralph?
Well, you know my position on the site.
Yeah, I was just, I'm thinking though, from what we have with our bylaws, and looking at what has been presented here, we really can only give eight lots.
Well, without a doubt, there's no 10 lots, they can't have 10.
Right.
Even if that 6 was, was wide enough, they can't have 10.
And we also couldn't find B1A.
Well, but the one doesn't, that A's all you need in that.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's what I think, so it looks like it's.
No open space, no, no bonus lot.
Right. So it looks like before we move further on this, we all need to get out to the site, correct? Okay, and that will be set up as soon as we can to get onto the property.
Get some boots.
Hip waiters.
I got some hip boots, and waiters.
Okay, so we'll set up a, Marlene and Brian will set up a time if you all sort of go out there and see you then. Yes, Marlene?
Oh, my face is so blinding, right, count on public land is not. That's the first we've heard of that, so, the stop is not indicated outside. I'm giving examples of other projects that are lit, so, I think that needs to be thought about.
That is school property, and it's not designated as open space, that would be the rationale behind what we're saying, their open space designation, some school property is not designated as open space.
That's not what the bylaw says.
I'm not going to debate with you, okay?
I wanted, I would like to get an opinion on that because I actually, it is actually beneficial to have a big open space next to the school, and that's one of the reasons why I liked it, and I, I understand everyone's point, but I want to learn more about that.
That's fine.
I think it's good to have a big open space there.
That's fine, but remember, we do have open space designation.
Right, I got to understand that whether it counts or not, that's, I, I hear both sides, I want to look at it a little more.
How do we get another opinion on that, Marlene, whether a school property is counted as open space?
That's public use, that's.
Yeah, it's not open space, that's what I'm saying.
How did, what did Marlene say?
She didn't say.
It's a question to staff, right? That's what it was?
We can, we can provide you with our records as to which properties are land bank, are protected, bought by land bank funds, have a CR on them, have a level of, you know, legal protection to remain in open space, and I don't believe any of those are hold for the North Falmouth School, but we will check that, in general, the school property is not protected.
So, we'll look for the date to go out there, and have a site visit, thank you. And then we'll set the next meeting. Thank you.
Mine is next week.
Yeah, but Boston's supposed to have maybe another couple of snowstorms. Okay, we move on to general correspondence, and I have a letter here from Bob Amet in regard to town meeting article nine, the proposed rezoning of Lot 65 at Town Hall Square, and these are arguments about the parking, and I'd like to let you and anybody who would like to go into the planning office to look at this before town meeting, that it is in the file, it's long enough that I don't want to read it, and we've already taken our vote on the article, so I'm just, I'm letting you know that it is here.
Would be able to get that by email?
I don't know, was it sent by email?
It wasn't, but we can scan it.
Okay.
Be nice to get that before town meeting, or before the precinct meeting anyways.
And then we have, Falmouth wants a YMCA, W A Y, Community Information Meeting, Thursday, March 26, 6 to 8 p.m., Falmouth Public Library in the Herman Foundation Room. This is, the purpose of this again is to report back to the many residents who have participated in research interviews, what the findings have been, and to discuss possible ways in which the Y is best suited to meet some of the identified needs, so that only, not only gets this out to our viewing public, but it allows all of you to know about that meeting, in case you're interested in it. And before the meeting, I handed out to all of you, and it had been emailed, I think earlier today.
Falmouth wants a Y.
Meetings at the various precincts, the only one that we cannot cover is precinct four, because we have a meeting that night, so we're not going to be covering precinct four, but all the others, thank you all for signing up for that. Okay, and our next meeting is March 31, and I will be here, so.
Mr.?
Yes.
You mentioned the public meeting about the Y, there's also a public meeting, if I understand correctly, on the information on the budget, this Saturday at the library, where the Jennifer Petit is going, and Julian Sousa is going to present the background of the budget to people who are interested, and I think that's probably a pretty important meeting to go to.
Okay, thank you for mentioning that, that wasn't in the correspondence file.
I believe it's 9:30 on Saturday at the Y, at the, at the library.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did you, you're not going to be here on March 31st?
Correct.
Okay, the Cobblestone is a special permit?
Right.
So will everybody be here on the 7th of April?
Didn't I just volunteer for a precinct, no, that was a different.
That's a long way from now.
It's because the special permit will need a super majority, oftentimes they like to make sure that everyone, you know, we don't lose people along the way.
Yeah, sure.
So just, if anyone is not going to be here on April 7th, please just let us know.
Okay. Because we do have time on Cobblestone Way, we're not pressed against a deadline, it would be our own mental deadline that we're putting in place here.
The bylaw again, I should.
Yeah, I really would recommend that. Then I would need a motion for adjournment at this point.
What could we hear?
Second.
All in favor?